7:02, I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Board of Supervisors of April 27, 2020. On the meeting this evening, we have Supervisor Rebecca Elliott, Harvey Greenwall, Rick Sheeler, and Spencer Claypool, and myself, Jim Marks. All five board members are present. We also have with us tonight our Township Manager Kevin Hennessy, our soon-to-be future Township Manager Erica Badorf, and our Township Solicitor Dan Sager. So at this time... Bear with me. Okay, so last week, on April 20th, the Governor signed Act 841 into law. And if you remember the preceding meetings, I cited the Sunshine Law as the authorization to hold these meetings virtually. The Governor signed a law that essentially says the same thing, gives authorization to the governing body to conduct meetings using authorized telecommunications devices, which this is, until the expiration or termination of the disaster emergency. Public participation shall also be provided during the meeting through either authorized telecommunications or written comments being mailed sent to the Township Building or emailed into an account designated by the Township. The Township website did have an email address for people to submit any public comments. That was posted multiple times over the past four days. I did not receive any public comment through email. Don't believe we received anything through the post office. There will be opportunities during this meeting to participate using the Zoom platform. At this time, I believe everybody is presently muted. You do have the ability to unmute yourself to join and comment at the meeting. There'll be times through the meeting while asked for public comment, you can go ahead unmute yourself at that time and offer your comment or question. You can also, if you'd like chat, type into the chat box, which you should be able to find along the lower portion of your screen. And I'll try to keep an eye on that to see if there's any questions that come up. So with all of that said, I think I covered all the basics. We're going to move forward with the meeting. So in your packet, it's the minutes from April 13, 2020. Do I have any comments or corrections on the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 13, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I have Harvey as a first, Spencer as a second. Should also state that this meeting is being recorded and that the recording will appear on the Township website in the next few days. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes are approved. You have the bills hopefully in front of you. Do I have any comments or questions on the bills from any of our board members?
Not me.
Okay. Hearing none. Do I have any comments or questions? These bills were posted on the Township website. They could be downloaded and viewed. Do I have any comments from the public on any of the bills?
Jim, it's Patty Worth. I had a question about the $2,900 bill from M&amp;M Tree for Kennelworth Park. I know there have been a lot of bids and estimates, and I know there's work being done. I was just curious what work this specifically applied to.
Kevin, do you have an answer?
It was either the initial payment or the secondary payment, or the removal of the, I believe it was six trees that were approved by Patty and their group when they were down there. Was it six trees that were approved?
I think there were, yeah, I think there were four trees, four or five trees plus pruning. So that's going to be paid in two installments. Is that correct?
It was paid initially. There was a payment that went out prematurely. They gave credit for that, and this is the balance.
Okay, I remember that. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other comments or questions on the bills? Okay, so we have unpaid bills totaling $56,392. Since our last meeting, we have a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $107,913. Do I have a motion to pay the $56,392 and acknowledge it's $107,913?
So moved.
I got Rebecca with the motion. Who was second?
Second.
Rick. Rick would have seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Developers' bills. Any comments or questions on the developers' bills? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to the Coventry Mall CBS subdivision. The mall submitted a subdivision request. It looks like this. This plan is also currently available on the Township website. If you'd like to take a closer look and read all the fine print there, you can download that also on the Township website under the announcement of this meeting tonight. CBS is requesting a breakout of the C... I'm sorry, the mall is requesting a breakout of the CBS site as a separate parcel. The purpose of this is an agenda item tonight is to move it forward on to the Planning Commission. Kevin, can you give us a little, like, some of the background and history here and what some of the challenges are that they can be facing?
Well, what I've been told is that they're looking to subdivide this parcel off because there's a prospective buyer for the CBS site along with the lease. There's a long-term lease that seems that's for the... I have been told that the mall is looking to do this so that they will have funds to do more renovations, including roof repairs to the Boscovs and other portions of the mall. So it's basically just breaking it out into a separate ownership along with marketing the lease that CBS has facility. There will be, it is being proposed, that there will be processments with this subdivision, with this lot, along with the rest of the mall regarding all the parking and access issues, so that even though it's under different ownership, it will be maintained as one parcel with the parking, common ownership, common access, et cetera.
Okay, so we discussed this offline, but I thought it might be a good idea before it even actually gets to the Planning Commission that a staff meeting be held to work through some of the issues, because the Planning Commission will have a lot of questions on this, and we should have some answers prepared for them. And it might make sense for the applicant and for the Township to bring all the consultants together, however that is, virtually or whatever, to work through some of that. Does that still make sense to you, Kevin?
Yes, absolutely. I think it would move the project along quickly and easily. So be it another virtual Zoom meeting, you know, back, given the situation, or, you know, getting some people together in one room, whatever. We'll wait and see what we can do in the next month or so.
Okay, so let's, and so let's reach out to the applicant, make sure that they're willing to escrow the money for the meeting?
Well, they've already escrowed the necessary fee, I believe it's $2,500, for the subdivision. And that staff meeting would be part of the subdivision process, and they would reimburse that escrow when it got low enough. So there is an escrow.
Okay, all right. Dan, are you happy with that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Kevin, you'll reach out to them, right?
I will.
Thanks.
Okay, so we need a motion to refer this to the Planning Commission. We're going to do two separate motions. So first motion is a motion to refer the plan to the Planning Commission, whose next meeting is May 20th. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
The motion was made by Harvey Greenwall, seconded by Spencer Claypool. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a second motion to approve a staff meeting with the costs of the consultants being deducted from the escrow amount held by the Township from the developer. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Harvey Greenwall made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick Sheeler seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to the bids for the oil and chip, which were received. We received three bids. Wait a minute, let me... I'm not following my own... Okay, what we'll do here first. We received three bids, the lowest being $3.44 per yard. I think Kevin, Kevin, you're recommending that we take no action on this at this time?
Well, it certainly acknowledged the bid and acknowledged the low bidder, but there is a 90-day period to accept the bids. And John's recommendation, John McKee's recommendation, since he cannot get the asphalt or the foam to do the base repair that needs to be done on these records before the oil and chip, we should hold off on awarding the bid until he makes enough progress on the base repair that we know that we can get the entire project done this, this summer.
Okay. Okay. Do we need a motion to acknowledge a bid, or is just the agenda item?
If you note the low bidder at $3.44 by, and there are two companies that are very similar, so I... Jim, you have the list in front of you, I hope, and can name that low bidder.
Are you seeing it on your screen?
I, I am not. I'm looking, I'm working off of my cell, my cellphone, so I have it on my screen.
Does anybody else see it on their screen?
Asphalt Maintenance Solution.
Okay. Okay, so Asphalt Maintenance Solution was the low bidder at $3.44 per yard. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the low bid by Asphalt Maintenance Solutions?
So moved.
Dan, is that sufficient emotion?
Well, I guess, Kevin, I have two, two issues. This doesn't make sense to rebid with the new cost potentially going down.
We're not rebidding.
You don't want to rebid.
No. The bids, the bids are good for 90 days, okay?
I get that, but why wouldn't? If we're not necessarily doing it cost-wise, isn't it most likely possibly going down that we would maybe want to rebid? Or not? You have...
Time, with the time constraints, I don't think there's adequate time to do that. I don't know if John McKee is on, perhaps he can address that, what or what his feelings are.
Yeah, I don't feel need to rebid. Typically, we get the same three contractors that bid yearly. My concern is with some of the industry shutdown right now, that we've had the time to do the prep work ahead of this work. So my feeling is if we can get a week or two to make sure the asphalt plants are going to be open consistent, and then we know, yeah, we'll be in good shape to get this work, get all the prerequisite work done, you know, July, so this can take place end of July. So that's my concern right now. It's just a feeling out for what's going on with the industry. Sounds like a lot of construction's opening up the first, so I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to get blacktop here in the next week or so.
Okay, then, then that's, that's fine, Jim, and obviously, yeah, you would need a motion, and that's what you're doing, and you're acknowledging the bid.
All right, so we're acknowledging the build, the bid for Asphalt Maintenance Solutions for $3.44 per yard for a total of $117,981.68 with no other action being taken on the bid. I had that motion made by Rebecca. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Harvey Greenwall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, just real quick for, for the minutes, that price is per square yard.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so earlier today, we're going to move on, earlier today, due to scheduling, the difficulty of scheduling and the urgency of bringing on a new police officer, the swearing-in of Officer Andrew Templin, Templin was held this morning. I did, it was held for the Zoom meeting. So that was the, that was this morning. Matt, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, he is very excited to be here, a part of North Coventry, and ready to go, and we're looking forward to him starting Wednesday night. He'll be with Corporal Zinger during his FTO training, and he'll be with him for several weeks, learning the ropes on our side, and like I said, he's real excited to be here.
That's great. And unfortunately, we couldn't all be present to welcome him. You'd notice everybody was practicing social distancing and best practices there. I assume that was his parents who were there and...
Yes, that was his, yeah, that was his mother and his father, who is the chief up in Douglas Township in Montgomery County, Barrie County.
That's great. He must be very proud. So we welcome him. We certainly look forward to meeting him and working with him once we get back to being in person. So, okay. We're going to move on to the discussion on bringing back the road crew. If you remember back on March 23rd, we made the decision with the stay-at-home order being in place and out of an abundance of caution that we split our road crew into two shifts, two, three-man shifts, working every other week. At this point, with stuff starting to ease a little bit, I think John has the work, especially with the grass starting to grow now, to bring the road crew back full-time, everybody working at full-time again, no off weeks and no, no alternating. So we need to, to have a motion to that. John, I do have a question as far as how they travel throughout the township. Do they ride in the trucks together, or are you going to try to keep everybody separate in each?
We really can't, we really can't put one guy in a truck. So typically, the most we have, we may have two guys in a truck at times. It's just not feasible to everybody, you know, we get into driving big dump trucks around the township, and it's just not...
Okay. Okay, so let's see, feeling of the board.
Well, do they wear masks while they do this? Do they wear masks? Face masks?
John?
We have not been. I mean, I think there's times going when we're cutting grass and stuff, we're pretty much isolated, where we haven't been wearing masks.
Oh, okay.
Getting the activities where we're working in tight quarters, that would probably be a time too. I don't know that there's particularly need to wear all the time.
Right. But if there's close proximity.
Right.
Do we have the mask?
Yes.
We do have the mants, right?
Yes, we have masks.
So we should probably encourage them at all, you know, to wear them as often as possible, especially when they're riding together in the trucks. It may not be necessary if they're on equipment by themselves, but certainly if they're riding in trucks and they're within six feet of each other, they need to be practicing best practices.
What about as far as sanitizer or a type of disinfectant spray within the truck or the vehicle?
So now, what we've been doing on Fridays with the groups that are leaving, Friday afternoon, we clean the shop, disinfect the shop for the next group. They do the same thing vice versa. So we spray it on the trucks, you know, everything that we're, we're in, clean the shop, the brake area, the bathrooms, we disinfect on Friday. So, you know, going forward now, I guess, you know, we'd have to be more often than, it has to be known to the employees that if they're sick or not feeling, we'll stay home.
Are you going to try and keep the same employees in the same trucks?
I, I don't know that. I mean, when we start doing our road work, the guys that, when we start running the big trucks for blacktop and stuff like, those guys will stay in those trucks. Now, there'll be, you know, we take our utility truck out, so it'll probably be two guys in that. There'll be a guy taking the backhoe out, so we'll be no more cautious. One guy, hey, you stay in the skid loader, one guy, we don't want different people hopping in and out of different pieces of equipment. So, yeah. But like I said, typically, no more than two guys in a truck. It's just when we're mowing and things like that, to get, you know, three different trucks out to park the mower or something, we just haven't been doing that. And it's just, you know, running extra vehicles. So, I mean, whatever your pleasure is, we'll make it work. Where are you going to get back to work?
Anybody else? So I think just practicing best practices, you know, especially when they're within six feet each other is the best way to move forward here. So I would ask for a motion to resume the full workforce as of next Monday, May 4th.
So moved.
Spencer, Spencer has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick, was that you?
Yes.
Rick, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let the guys know, John.
All right, thank you.
Get back to work. Yep, thank you. Okay, next portion of the agenda. All good things. So, all good things. So if you don't know, this is our last goodbye of the year, I hope. As I said in the beginning of the year, this is our year of goodbyes, with Kevin being the last one to leave us this year. And just Kevin, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for, for all your years of service here in North Coventry Township. We all know you were born and raised here, and, you know, you live and breathe North Coventry Township, and it's been no truer than the last 17 years as Township Manager. We appreciate all of the guidance you have given us. You say, you've said often that you are the line of defense between what goes on out in the world and the, and the board, and it's your job to filter through that and handle what you can and, and filter to us what we need, and you've done a great job for that for many, many years. So just wanted to thank you for that, wish you the best on your retirement and whatever that has, whatever is in store for you in the future.
Well, thank you very much, Jim. It's certainly been an honor and a privilege to serve North Coventry Township. I'm, you know, very happy to have done it for as long as I have. Sad to leave, I can't say that, you know, I'm certainly going to miss it. I'm going to miss all of you, the Board of Supervisors. I've been blessed with great boards since I started, back from Ken High and Bill Deegan all the way through to the current board. You've been wonderful. I've told Erica that she will have the support of the board and going forward, and best of luck to all of you. Hopefully, I can get my golf game improved a little bit.
Good luck with that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Spence, thank you, Rick, everybody. Certainly, it's been, been a great, great board that I've had, especially the last few I hear a dog barking. Who, that's not Isabel.
No, I think it's Max.
Oh, okay.
And so with that, we turn towards our future Township Manager, Erica Badorf, who officially joined us. Erica Badorf, who officially joined us last Monday. And it's been transitioning to her full-time position. And tonight we are going to appoint her as township manager and board secretary. So Erica, we welcome you. We look forward to working with you. You do have big shoes to fill. But we have no doubt that you'll be able to do a great job. We have the utmost confidence in your abilities going forward. We look forward to being in person to work with you certainly, but we're gonna work through that. But you should know that we are here to support you. If there's anything you need, please, you know, we're only a phone call away for now. And we look forward to what's ahead.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it tremendously, you know, with Kevin and your departure, you know, asking the questions, learning from you, going through this day by day, you know, as a resident, you're all doing something right. And I'm proud to to serve and to take this township in the next step with your guidance and your support. So thank you very much. I look forward to it.
And in 17 years, some board will be holding this for you.
Lot of work ahead.
At this time, I'm gonna ask that we have a motion to name Erica Badorf as township manager and board secretary. As we do at the reorganization meeting each year, we appoint township manager and board secretary to be effective on May 1st. So I have that motion. Harvey Greenwald made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Rick Schiller seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Welcome aboard, Erica.
Thank you.
Okay. Administration supervisors reports, anything from any of the board members? I'll just add that the Regional Planning Commission was canceled last month. There's a discussion about holding the meeting virtually at the end of May. And we'll see what happens with that going forward. Fire company meeting was also canceled last month. There's undecideds. At this point, their meeting is the second Tuesday in May and a decision has not been made yet on that. They did, I talked to the president of the fire company yesterday. He he assured me that this, you know, this month has been tough. They lost Bingo certainly. So a lot of their funding has slowed. They're encouraging, you know, donations wherever and whenever possible. They, they've been able to meet their bills for April. They have some concerns about May, although they are receiving in tonight's bill some money from the tax revenue. So that should certainly help in the in the month of May. No decision at this point has been made about the fair, although that's starting to look questionable, certainly, but no decision yet. So that's that. Any, anything from any of the other board members?
Open space, it was scheduled, I believe, the meet tomorrow night has been canceled. Tentatively next month is scheduled, but I believe there was a date that I read that might have been a misprint or something. I think the board meets the second meeting from now on Tuesday, maybe. Is that correct, Chris? Are you on?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's because of Memorial Day. Instead of Monday, it's a Tuesday meeting.
Yes, that's, that's correct. It was moved to the third Tuesday of the month instead of the fourth Tuesday because to avoid the conflict with the board of supervisors meeting.
Just for this month, or just for the month of May?
Month of May, the, um, right. April's meeting's been canceled.
Right. Anything else?
Yes, the PSAT State Conference was canceled.
Yep. It's supposed to be this weekend coming up. Okay, action item list, anything on the action item list? Checklist. Kevin's final checklist.
Yeah, actually just two things. First of all, we received the contract from Chester County for the $80,000 for the acquisition of the Miller property. So as soon as we go through with the settlement on that, we can make the application to the county for the return of that money. Then the second thing, last meeting, it was asked about the Rock property. I believe it's either 1754 or 1784 St. Peter's Road. I did have contact with Chuck Garner, the attorney for Mr. Rock. He said that he had not, at this point, been successful in securing a landscaper to start mowing the property. I told him that obviously both the neighbors, as well as the township, would like to see that done. And he said that he was going to try to get that accomplished within the next week.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it. Again, thank you, board members. Thank you, residents of North Coventry. It's been a privilege and a pleasure to serve you.
Very good. Rebecca, anything?
No.
Rick?
No, nothing.
Harvey?
No.
Spencer?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, I have a brief, a brief checklist. I thought I might take the opportunity since I have your undivided attention and I have complete control. Maybe at least a little bit for Erica's benefit too. Hold on, just see if I can get that out here. Okay. Second. As many of you know, I've been maintaining and running the township website for, since way back when nobody knew what a website was. And it's thought I was crazy to do it. But what I've never shared with you is the performance of the website. So let me see if I can do that here. So can you see that? See that? Google Analytics. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so a couple of interesting things I saw about this. This is, Google Analytics is attached to our website. It measures all of the activity of the website constantly. And Google is like heavy into stats, which I like. I like stats a lot. So, oops, let me just get to where I need to get. Bear with me. There we go. Okay. So traffic to our website. We get about 75. This is the past 30 days since March 28th. We get an average of about 75 hits per day. And you'll see there's different spikes and some of these spikes are sometimes when minutes are released or something may be released. April 14th, not really sure what that is without going to see what was going on at the website. It did 255, but on the average, we get about 75 hits per day. So 200, we got down here 2,300 visits to the website. Websites come through Google. So people Google us to find this, to find the website. Direct will type in or they'll have a link on their, in their browser to our website. And then Facebook, Facebook comes directly to us. We have a lot, we have a Facebook page. I do post from the website onto the Facebook page, which brings people to our website. So Facebook brings quite a bit. So if you look for the year. So this is year to date. I'm gonna lose my headphones. Some, someday back here, March 16th was the start of the virus and the shutdown. We hit almost 1,000 visitors that day. But you see the, the activity over year to date. So we've had 8,700 people visit our website since the beginning of the year. Which is, you know, if you're, you like numbers, it's kind of interesting. And if you look at the demographics, this is really interesting because I get a lot of, I get comments from people who say, especially when you're talking about posting agendas and minutes to websites, they say people, you know, seniors don't have the opportunity to get those. But if you look at the numbers in the last column here on the right, it's 65 and older. So if you look at the number of people who are seniors, it's pretty much equal to the others. 45 to 54 is a little bit higher. But people with access age-wise until you hit down to 18 to 24, pretty much all have the same equal ability to, to visit our website and get the information that we provide. Interestingly enough, and I have no explanation for this, 60% of our visitors are female, 40% are male. Don't know why that is. But that's what it is. And then lastly, page reports, this shows you, this is the summary of what pages are being hit. This number, number one here is the main homepage. And then after that, there's individual pages that are visited. This time of year, local income tax is not unusual. People are looking for tax information. The document library is where I keep a lot of the forms that are needed. So people will be there looking for the forms and then codes, FAQs, that kind of thing. So just funny, you know, it might be interesting to see, you know, how, you know, what we do, where we are, the kind of traffic that the website gets. If you look at this over time, usually Monday to Fridays are peak times and then Saturday, Sunday it drops off. This past, you know, past month or so, it's been pretty even through the weekends. And I guess that's because everybody's home all the time. So it's more spread out. So just put that out there. I thought it might be interesting to look at kind of how we reach people and that kind of thing. And then while I'm on it, to show you the township Facebook page, if you've not seen this before. This is where anything I post on the township website gets shared out to the Facebook page. And this is where it really gets, it gets its views. More people see us through Facebook than through the website, which should not be a surprise. We get hundreds of people, sometimes thousands of people looking at these posts. Depending on what they are, these posts here about the distance and safe were provided by the county to post. And I've been posting those the last seven days or so, and they've done pretty well. So you can see, if you click on the thing, it'll take you right to our, our website. I've already talked to Erica about trying to help step this up a little bit, make improvements, get a fresh set of eyes on it and see where we can make improvements to it, make them more effective. My ultimate goal is to win the PSET Award at some point next year for our communication. So I certainly think based on what I've seen out there that we, we could compete if we work together. So, so that's it. Just thought that might be interesting to see.
Nice work, Jim.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you. And that's it. That's all I have on my checklist. Dan, anything on yours? Nope, I have nothing. Okay, this was the portion of the meeting for public comment. So I'm gonna ask, does anybody have any public comment? If you do, just please unmute yourself and ask away. Anybody?
Hello, Jim. This is Dan Doyle.
Hey, Dan.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Doing fine. This is a question for Kevin, but since he's leaving, it's going to actually be for Erica. The concern is, have they started to look out as township managers of what the effect will be of the loss of revenue to the township for what's happening with the coronavirus pandemic? And people staying at home and the revenue that will be dropping? Have we started to look at that at all to see how that will?
We have not. I don't know where that information would be available as far as what's happened. We have the general news of so many millions of people applying for unemployment. So certainly I think that there will be a drop in the earned income tax for this coming year. But how to project that through this time, I don't know. And I haven't, haven't seen anybody work on any projections for that.
As a township manager, you deal with the township managers or association around the state. Has anybody even started to think about that? Because probably every township will have a lost revenue projections at some point.
The, most of the discussion that has been ongoing on a regular basis with Chester County Consortium has been what has happened as far as the lack of inspections, the lack of permits going out, et cetera, and the lack of work. It appears that we will be coming back on board with that May 1st. And we're trying to get up and work on that, to bring that up to speed and to be able to keep our people moving forward with their projects that they want to do at home. But I have not seen anything else. Erica, please speak up if you have seen anything.
No, I would happen to agree with you, Kevin. We are remaining in communication with the Chester County Consortium, certainly. And with Chester County as a leader helping to really serve as, you know, a leading force in trying to navigate through these issues. And, you know, what's going on at the state and national level. We're reviewing our financials now. We're in this. We're going to have to monitor it and report back as the weeks and months progress and make decisions to keep things stable and looking forward to slowly implementing everyone getting back to work safely. So it is definitely a concern and we should be watching over that. And we will do so.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, Diana and I would like to thank you for your time as township manager and the times that we've interacted together. And Erica, welcome aboard to be the new person that we talk to when, when we need something. Thank you very much for your time, both of you. And thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Diane.
Okay, any other public comment? Last chance for public comment. There's a mute button if you're having, if you want to comment, you just unmute yourself and talk. I'm not seeing anybody jumping on. So at this time, I'm gonna end the meeting. Our next meeting is what? It may?
May 11th.
Yeah, so our next meeting is May 11th at this point. I suspect we're planning to have, we'll be holding that virtually. I would think that our transition out of this will be a move to hold the meetings without public attending, slowly ramping up and maybe making those meetings visible online or through Facebook somehow before hopefully soon being able to just open the doors and welcome everybody in. But from all indications, it's gonna be a while before we can do that. So just keep an eye on the website. The meeting information will be posted as far as joining us again here on Zoom for, for the 11th. So again, thank you all for coming. And again,